Order, it is January 11th, 2016. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy. Kim.
Here.
Norton.
Here.
Rikus.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Very good. Will all who are able, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Appreciate everyone braving the elements to get here. We have a pretty full agenda tonight. We have a couple of features on our zoning hearing, kind of right near the beginning, as well as a electric control commission meeting to hear from Maya's, Maya's Restaurant, amongst several other things. I think, Mr. Semple, about a million and a half in bills to vote on, all of which are detailed in here in the packet available to you that's online in great detail. All right? First up is the approval of minutes. I need a motion, please, to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from December 14th, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Norton.
Second.
Second by Russell. Discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Norton.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Next up is a motion to approve the public hearing minutes, the public hearing meeting minutes from December 14th, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Rikus.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Rikus.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Next up is public commentary. Now, before we, before I call for that, just want to remind folks here that we have a public hearing come up regarding the Mackland Land zoning topic. And so if those that wish to address the board on that topic could please hold your comments to the actual hearing itself. Right now, though, we have public commentary for the village board meeting itself. Would anyone like to comment and address the board on a topic other than that? See your hand. We have one, one, two, three, four. Perfect, okay? Let's start, go left or right here.
Thank you very much. My name is Keith Voss. I was here last, last meeting. And Mayor, at the last meeting, when the levy did not pass, you put forth a challenge to the board members, and I'm assuming back to the village board or the village administration, to come up with ideas on how to cut the shortfall. And, you know, if you weren't going to vote for the levy, whatever. And as you know from our first encounter with baseball, I take a challenge rather seriously, right? That being said, I'm not sure if any, the things that I'm going to say, I'm not sure if any trustees have actually thought about it, if they've done any of their homework or dug into it. All the information I have here, I've gotten off of the website. They're ideas that I have based upon my experiences, obviously not in the public sector, but in the private sector. I know that I'm going to cause controversy with some of the things I'm saying. I also know that I haven't discussed this with any board members, except for Trustee Rikus, prior to the December meeting. So, ground rules set, right? First of all, I have to say that the village has done some very good things and is run quite well. There are a lot of really good things that people have to understand the village does well. The newsletter that you sent out in December was a great synopsis of the things that were accomplished last year. That being said, we all know there's room for improvement, possible improvement, right? My solutions come from two perspectives. One are immediate things that can be done, and two would be more of a long-term perspective on how we might be able to right the ship, Trustee Semple, going forward, right? So my first question for the village board is, have you all looked at the budget? Have you all looked at line by line? Have you all looked at the bill playlist? Have you all looked at different items that are out there? Are you in agreement with everything that was put out there? Do you think that seriously, none of that can be addressed and taken off? I know that won't come up to $500,000, but it's a challenge to you as trustees to inspect everything that comes through. Again, I don't know if you've done that or not. I'm just saying, there's an opportunity. So, a few ideas. And remember, you are not going to like some of the things I'm going to say. Maybe we should stop giving money away to businesses, existing businesses, without getting something returned. I don't know if there's a cost-benefit analysis that comes to the board when there's some, when a business or a group comes to you and says, "I want money." If there is, great. If there isn't, maybe that's something we can look for. I believe that we should stop purchasing land that may or not be, may or may not be used in 20 years. An example would be the Public Works land supposedly off of Allison Road. There are probably others, not sure. I'm not privy to everything you have. You guys know. Looking through the bill playlist, I noticed there were a lot of charges to cell phones. I don't know about you, but in the real world, cell phones are, if businesses, if you need a cellphone for your business, you basically use your, your personal phone. Now, there can be exceptions here. Obviously, the police need, need phones and things like that. But I saw an awful lot of payments, and they may be to vendors that are, that sound, look like sell vendors. So, looking at that may save some dollars, not $500,000, but could save some dollars. One thing that I know is also a very touchy situation, touchy subject, is have employees pay more for their benefits. I understand unions have negotiated things. I understand that. However, last year, I paid over $200 per paycheck for my benefits, for my medical benefits, not counting the $6,000-plus deductible that I had to have. That's common in the private sector. If, I think, I don't know what the employees pay here, but if you take a simple $20 per paycheck increase, multiply by 150 employees, which is $40 a month, that's $72,000. And that would be more in line, potentially, with what has to be, what's being done in the private sector, given the huge costs of medical insurance. And now you're all going to hate me. Freeze salaries. One thing that we have to say is, I know from being on the school board that there is a tendency to have Mundaline be lumped with Lake Forest, Libertyville, in the, in the case of high school or school district, Stevenson, Lincolnshire. We can't compete with them. We don't have the tax base. We don't have, we don't have that funding to, and I ran into this with the school board, to always be told, "Well, we have to pay our people like those other districts." I'd like to see where that is, and I'd like to see if that can be addressed through our attorneys, to see if that's something that really has to be kept into place. Because, quite honestly, Mundaline is the poor child, the poor stepchild of the bunch. So, not only for department heads, but for all employees. Now, freezing salaries for one year, I don't think would be really a hardship, as I know that most people in the private sector have either lost jobs, had to come in at lower pay, or have taken a long time to come back up to the pay that they had. So, a one-year freeze, I think, would be a realistic and achievable goal. One thing I think that we all have to understand is, sorry if this is taking kind of a long... One thing we have to understand is, if we control salaries, we control pensions. Because of how the idiotic system in Springfield is, I understand that we have, the board has to work through the state pension system. There's, you guys can't get around that. I mean, that's realistic. So, off of the village websites, I did some research, and 21% of the village employees make over $100,000 each. 42% make between $80,000 and $100,000. And the remainder of the employees make $80,000 or less, with the smallest salary at least posted online was $61,428. Not bad, considering after 20, 25 years, 30 years, whatever, you get 75% of that as pension. That increases 3% a year forever. So, I believe that if we control salaries, we control pensions. Ultimately, any cost of salary increases goes to the pension bottom line five, 10, 15, 20 years later, as people retire. And I think that's something that we need to keep in, in mind as we go forward. Also on the website were salaries for 2014, 15, 2015, 16, okay? Unfortunately, it's a PDF format, and it took me a while to format it and do some analysis. However, from what I could tell closely, the increase in salaries for, over that time of period was $400,000. Now, I will tell you that my, my numbers are flawed. And I can tell you my numbers are flawed because it doesn't take into consideration people that have left, positions that haven't been refilled. And quite honestly, there may be some consolidation of things that I'm just not aware of. But if I took pure titles and matched the salaries across, I came to $400,000. Now, if you take an 80% version of that, which is what people get in the public sector from a pension perspective, as they retire, 80% of $400,000 is a little bit over $300,000. So, if my numbers are correct, and again, I'll qualify them that they're likely not, but for illustration purposes, your increases of salaries last year increased the pension benefits, the future pension benefits for this village, on annual basis, $300,000 over the course of time. Just that increase in salaries. That's just something I just want you to think about as you go forward. Anyway, we'll go back to other things that you guys may know and may be able to do. Intergovernmental agreements. I know you guys have done some of that. Are there more? Maybe there are, maybe there aren't. And last but not least, you haven't done this recently, and I think, Trustee Semple, you were the only one here, when the prior village administrator left, there was a huge bump in that salary, in that payout, and it was an extremely large payout from a pension perspective. I know you've stopped that practices, and I know that that won't happen again, but I think that there's something to keep in the back of your mind as people do retire. Now, for the fun part. Long-term solutions. I think there's two. One is asset management, and one is becoming, we all say business-friendly, but how do you become business-friendly? I have some ideas. Asset management, I know online there is a list of, of properties, businesses out there. However, is there a list somewhere of all of the property that this village owns? If there is, is there a list of property out there? Is there a list of uses for that property? And do we know if those properties are being utilized at 100%? Are there properties that we can sell? Are there properties that we can get better uses out of? I think that we should just ask those questions. Finally, the board here has an important job, and that is setting goals for the village. And I think, setting goals, if the village is really, really, really trying to bring in more businesses, I think that setting the goal of business formation, business acquisition, whatever, bringing them into the village, I believe that that is something that should be the first thing in line for the village. So, John, I love you dearly. You do a great job. I don't know what your, how your whole thing works, but I will say that if the board is serious, your number-one goal is to bring business into this, into this village. There were a lot of things that were done last year to bring, to make the village more efficient, and consolidation, things like that, fantastic. But we need to bring more business into the village. If the board's serious, put that in, no offense, John, in your goals, right? Now, there's a lot of ways we can do this. I'm, I'm going to skip through a lot of this stuff. If you guys want more information on how to, to set those goals, some things that I've thought of, I'd be glad to talk to you about any of that. So, ultimately, last part of this is communication and marketing. One thing I think that the village can do, and I, and again, I'm not privy to everything, but the bottom line is, have we, what have we done to go out and solicit, bring in new businesses? Are we searching online to find businesses that are growing? Are we making contacts for them? Are we able to have information? When businesses come to us, are we capturing that information in a way that if they don't come to Mundaline, they choose somewhere else? Are we getting that information? Are we able to analyze that information? It's all about utilizing our strengths and, and the strengths of around how to get them to fit into Mundaline. We need somebody to proactively go out there and figure out how to bring in businesses into this, this town. And if there are problems in the process, do we have a situation where there's a process all the way through where we have identified, I don't know whether it's getting permits or whatever, you, you name the process, initiation of a village applying to, to, a company applying to the village? I don't even know how that works. But is there a way for the, the village, is there a step-by-step process that's there? And has anybody analyzed it to say, "Does this make sense? Can we cut out a few steps? Can we streamline things?" You know, it is, it's kind of simple analysis at the business level to become more efficient. Anyway, I'm sure we all have database of current businesses out there. Hopefully, you keep a list of businesses that contacted us, or we contacted them, and we're trying to get them and keep that relationship going to bring them in. Finally, these are only suggestions. You guys can take it or leave it, as far as how this is. But I think there are opportunities to make improvements. And I think that we need to keep this in mind as we go forward, because, quite honestly, Trustee Semple was right. The pension system is dire, and it's not just us. It's everyone in the state. For that, we can thank Springfield. However, we have to live with that. You guys have to live with that. So, turning over stones, looking under rocks, thinking different ways, maybe there are some opportunities to grow the business base in this, in this country, in this village, and maybe there's a way to push and get things working a little bit differently so that we can consolidate and get some of that taken care of. Anyway, I hope you find that this is useful. If you want some information, I have my spreadsheets that I can send you. I'd be glad to chat with any of you. If you have any questions, want to know a few more things about it. And I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me, and I appreciate you doing a good job, and thank you very much for everything.
Okay, thank you. All right. Who is next here? Moving this way? There we go.
Good evening. Joe Shuan, 28630 Champions Court. Like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and the start of my new year in talking to the board. First of all, I got a suggestion. I hope the town or city will buy one Powerball ticket. It might alleviate a lot of the problems. Then we'll have to discuss what you're going to do with the money. I, and mine is very short, just a couple of questions. Number one, work on 17660. Is that the utility company just moving things around, or is that actually the start of the program?
It's both. It's the start of the program, and it is utility company moving things around.
So, I will have to get up here again and say you're going to move it to spring, to fall? I went through all seasons with you last year.
Yeah, I, I think it's a safe bet.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I, I'm glad to see something is happening there.
I think it's a safe bet to say spring.
Okay. Because I, they've, they've got stakes out there.
Yeah. Contract, contract's been let.
Okay. Thank you on that. Okay, the Safeway store, I enjoyed your newsletter, which I received at my home. The property is, you mentioned in your letter that Safeway renewed the lease. And I think they renewed that lease for a competitive reason, that they want to keep stores out of there. If you recall, that Jewel and Safeway are now under one equity company, and they were behind the, which I was also involved in, the Walmart situation. And why would they renew a lease when they're not in this market? With Kroger coming around, buying Mariano's, the only reason I looked at that is they're, they're just trying to stop any grocery store from coming into that center. That, that's what I, I'm asking the board. What do you think about that?
Well, I won't, I won't publicly speculate on their motives, okay? They did exercise their five-year option to renew the lease. I am in touch with the broker for both the holding company and the broker for the owner. They each have hired a broker. And I've put it on our monthly to-do list that I'm in touch with both parties once a month, just to keep tabs on the progress on getting that space filled. It's a high priority for me and our board and, and our, you know, community development department, and for them, for them also.
So if...
I'm convinced they're, they're pretty motivated.
But again, why would Safeway renew that lease when they, they're not in this market? Unless they want to block somebody from taking that space, another grocery store chain, from taking that space? That, that's, that's what I'm addressing, and I think you should address the landlord the same question, and saying if somebody came along, say Kroger wanted to go into that space, would Safeway relinquish the lease?
Well, you're speculating there.
Oh, yes, I am, but...
But it's just, I mean, the owner of the property is motivated to have an anchor in there so that it benefits the rest of the tenants in their investment.
Okay.
Okay? And then the holding company that renewed the lease, they're motivated to get someone in there so that they can get paid for some of the lease that they're paying out every month.
Okay. I, I just hope it's, I hope it's another grocery store.
Well...
Comes in there. In that part of it. Anything on the development of a property across from Target on 60? Is there anything going on there?
How would you characterize that?
I would characterize it as no.
Okay.
Yeah. No, there's been no recent activity.
Then last but not least, a question on the old Benard property. There was mention of Walmart going in there. Is that still pending, or is that sort of dead?
Yeah, we understand that that's still in litigation between the property owner and the mortgage holder.
Okay, so that's, that's tied up in courts between those two individuals?
Correct.
All right. Because that, that property, if they, Walmart would bring a grocery store, and that would help the area too, on that. Well, again, you've got your work cut out for you. Buy the Powerball ticket, and you'll all be smiling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, over here. There we go.
Trudy Balo, Trinity Drive in Mundaline. Good evening. Happy New Year. My comments tonight are directed to the procedures that were used at the zoning and planning meeting that was held on this past week, January 6. On the agenda that evening was a public hearing for the Mack and Land Company, otherwise known as the Graham C. Stores. When the speaker asked the board for a motion to open public commentary, no one made a motion, so those in the audience could not speak. So that sort of leads me to two things. The first one being that I guess my presence is so powerful, I scared everybody at the committee meeting that night, or that the board itself is just scared to face certain, certain truths in doing business. But whatever belief is correct really doesn't matter, because what does matter is that those in the audience were silenced and were not allowed to speak. No one on the board was going to follow the procedure, and to me, that's pretty incredulous. There was no way the board knew who would be speaking that evening. My name was on the sign-in sheet, which only meant I was present. But how dare they not let anyone else speak that evening? And my greatest fear is that the minutes from that zoning meeting will be entered into the archives, and the minutes will be approved, but they will be untruthful. I'm sure the meeting, the meeting minutes will read that no one in the audience asked to speak, so public commentary was closed. But that is so wrong. So what does this really show in the end? That the list of items done poorly and incorrectly by those representing the village of Mundaline just continues to grow.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Ralph Dillon, Post Office Box 908, Mundaline. First thing, a nice discussion with the mayor and Holly Kim on Saturday about a serious problem in Mundaline. People are walking on Lake Street, trucks move at 45 miles an hour, and somebody's going to get killed. Three people, I saw three people walking on the road on the way to the coffee. I saw one person walking on the road today. The snow is so heavy because it's thrown from three lanes of traffic onto Mundaline sidewalks. Mundaline sidewalks are not in the correct place. They go right up to the next to the curb. There isn't a homeowner who can be expected to clean three layers of, of truck snow, especially when it's icy. And so what happens? Every winter, somebody walks on it. In weather like this, and in weather on Saturday, all it takes is one slip and a 45-mile-an-hour truck, and somebody's going to be dead. More than anything about budget, I don't want to see somebody die. I know everybody in this room drives. We're not the ones who are going to get killed. But whoever's walking is somebody who's working very hard. The mayor said he'd look into it. I'm waiting for appropriate action. Government moves slow, so I expect this will not be a problem next winter. And I'll be following you. Number two, on the agenda, the board is going to go over bills. I want to recommend you don't pay certain legal bills. The lawyer has said that only the last covenant counts. This is not truth. I don't think he can find anything in LexisNexis or Illinois law. That, that expense should be paid by errors and omissions, or should be reported to the bar, as this is a way to bill more attorney fees. I look at all the attorney's fees, all the consulting fees, and look at how much money's being spent, and it could have offset the proven pension increment that everybody's been trying to get more money for. Mundaline didn't used to spend this money on consultants and legal fees. Number three, there's a hearing on the agenda. I looked at everything that's at 7:00 on Friday. The amendments to the pension were not there. I've sent Freedom of Information requests, and I've not received what those amendments are. No one knows what those amendments are. They didn't know ahead of time. They couldn't come to the meeting. This hearing is not a real hearing, because people couldn't even look at what you were doing. The city has wasted a lot of money on this stuff, and I'd like to have you have a proper hearing. It's cost a lot of money because you haven't done things right. You've broken laws all the way along the way. I'll cite them later. The zoning board said along the way that they are no longer interested. A letter was sent to an attorney saying, citing the lack of interest. I urge especially the board Mundaline Truck Stop women to wait for proper notification before you have the hearing. That's it.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else for public commentary? All right. No one? Okay. We'll close the floor for public commentary. Moving along in the agenda, that takes us to presentations and awards. There are none this evening, which takes us to the public hearing. All right. This concerns the First Amendment to the annexation agreement between Mackland Land Company, LLC, and Graham C. Stores in the village of Mundaline. So... Do we need to recess into this?
Yes.
Okay. So what I need is a motion, please, from the board to recess into the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Okay. 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 At this point, we need a motion to convene the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Kim. Discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Very good. And then, attendance.
Ricas.
Yes.
Very good. And then attendance.
Abernathy.
Kim.
Here.
Norton.
Here.
Ricas.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
All right. So what I'll do now is read from the list of rules of procedure. We'll then have opening remarks if Mr. Graham's here. I believe he is. And then we'll hear about, we'll hear from Mr. Libado regarding a summary of the proposed annexation agreement. Then we'll have question statements by members of the public, questions and statements by members of the village board, and then we'll close the public hearing. All right? So here are the rules of procedure. There are six items here. First, the purpose of the public hearing is to solicit comments from the public on the prepared annexation agreement. Number two, the order of the proceedings has been made available to the audience. Number three, members of the audience that wish to ask questions or make statements regarding the annexation agreement may do so during the time period noted on the order proceeding sheet. Number four, all questions from the audience should be directed to the mayor. If the mayor is unable to answer the question, the mayor will direct the question to staff, village attorney, or the petitioner. Number five, please don't repeat questions that have already been asked. And six, audience members wishing to ask a question or make a statement should wait to be recognized by the mayor. All right. So at this point, we have opening remarks. Mr. Graham, do you wish to make a few statements?
No, thank you.
Okay, very good. That takes us to the First Amendment to the annexation. First, a summary by Mr. Libado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the First Amendment to the annexation agreements. And this annexation agreement, that's the purpose of the public hearing tonight. And that First Amendment deals with really two things. And it provides what we call maybe an exit ramp for the petitioner to disconnect the property from the village of Mundaline should two things not occur. One, there is some question about the getting clear title to the Hawthorne Boulevard property. And so if we're unable to address those concerns, then the petitioner would have a right to disconnect the property from the village corporate boundaries. And number two, there's a second exit ramp for the video gaming. So if he's unable to get video gaming, then this First Amendment provides that exit ramp as well. Both of those kind of came up through the process and then there wasn't enough time. The initial agreement provided for like 45 days, they had this right to disconnect. And this is being extended out to July 1st of 2016. So that, in summary, is the First Amendment to the annexation agreement.
Okay, thank you. Next up, under item 4B, is questions or statements by members of the public. Does anyone in the audience live wish to address the board of the hearing at this time? Okay. No one? Okay. Then we will close that part down. Questions or statements from members of the village board? Does anyone wish to, do you have questions for staff? Anyone?
I do. I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good.
Just so that I understand it completely, if this agreement is approved, but the petitioner is able to secure both of the items, which will allow him to go out of the agreement, then the annexation would continue and the video gaming, if he pursues it, would take place? Is that correct? If we say yes to this, we're going to allow this, but we're saying he can jump out if he don't get the license and we can get.
Correct.
But what if he does get both of them? Then the annexation and everything that he's looking to do there will take place. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
The annexation has actually, has taken place. This is just kind of conditions on that annexation. And so this amendment gives him the right, not the obligation, to exit if he chooses.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm curious, are there, what advantages does this provide to the village? It seems very helpful to Mr. Graham, but if we make this amendment, does this benefit us in any way?
Yeah, the, well, the obvious benefit is additional revenues from sales tax receipts and from property taxes.
If he, if the amendment goes through and he decides, if he does not get video gaming, then he would not annex and we would lose that benefit.
Correct.
So really, by making this amendment, we're giving him the opportunity to not pay those taxes to us.
Well, it's voluntary whether or not somebody wants to annex into a municipality. So it's voluntary to begin with. And under those circumstances, there was a, as I indicated, a 45-day kind of exit ramp, if you will, in the original annexation agreement. We weren't able to satisfy that provision, which was the clear title to the Hawthorne Boulevard. So we collectively spoke with the petitioner and concluded that we would, we agreed that we would give more time. They had delivered to us a letter requesting that they disconnect at that moment. And we spoke with the petitioner and they agreed to give more time to this question, to try and answer this question. So they have essentially, if the board approves this amendment, will have withdrawn that request to disconnect and give us more time till July 1st, 2016, to try and resolve these questions.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Then we'll close that part down. And at this point, I think we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is that correct? Okay, very good. Do I have a motion? Please do adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kim.
I'll second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Very good. That takes us to. One moment. Okay. We need a motion to reconvene the village board meeting. So moved. Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
All right, very good. So we are reconvened and we are now at the mayor's report. Wait a minute. Attendance, I'm sorry.
Abernathy.
Kim.
Here.
Norton.
Here.
Ricas.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Very good. Okay. Now we're back. Okay. Under the mayor's report, I have a few items. First, we have a mayoral proclamation recognizing the Lockloman Property Owners Association. We have some board members from the association here. Fritz Chesick is present and he'll address us after I read this. All right. Whereas the Lockloman Property Owners Association was chosen to receive the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission's 2015 Community of the Year Award. And whereas this award recognizes the Lockloman Property Owners Association's long history of dedication to protect Lockloman through education, community pride, and volunteerism. And whereas the efforts and contributions of the Lockloman Property Owners Association are numerous and include education on best practices to improve lake water quality, participation in the Bull Creek-Bulls Brook Watershed Council to formulate strategies and mitigate current and future problems with the lake and the watershed beyond, and the ability to promote community engagement through resident participation. And whereas commendation is also warranted for the Lockloman Property Owners Association's establishment at the advisement council with the village of Mundaline, Lake's management unit of the Health Department, and the Stormwater Management Commission to help negotiate issues that could affect Lockloman. And whereas the Lockloman Property Owners Association has also supported and contributed to rain garden planning, park upgrades, brush removal, stream bank protection, dam restoration, storm sewer management, and phosphorus monitoring within the community. And now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and board of trustees of the village of Mundaline that the Lockloman Property Owners Association be commended for their selection as the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission's 2015 Community of the Year, which recognizes them for their efforts and commitment to protecting Lockloman. So, Mr. Chesick, let's give him a hand here.
Briefly, we have our president, Jim Carroll, of the Lockloman Property Owners Association. And you of course know Robin Meyer, who has been working with us in the advisement council. First of all, my name is Fritz Chesick. I represent the Lockloman Property Owners Association Lake Management Committee. I would like to especially thank Mayor Lentz, Holly Kim, John Libado, Mike Flynn, Bill Emrick, and Joe DeVito, who have personally helped us in meeting some of the goals that we've put forth to garner this award. Out of these many efforts has risen kind of this good neighbor policy that we have taken to. We're intending to move forward to be good neighbors, not only to our community, but to the entire village of Lockloman, I mean, of village of Mundaline, and to our neighbors up and down the stream, the Bull Brook-Bull Creek watershed. So our Community of the Year Award reflects well a disvillage's continuing dialogue with its constituents in this community. We thank you for that. We thank you for the commendation.
There you go. Thank you very much. All right. That takes us to the solo property utility request.
Yeah, that, I had been contacted by the petitioner on Friday after the agenda went out. And he is considering annexation. And so he's asked that that be pulled from the agenda tonight so that we can continue those discussions to see whether or not he chooses to move forward with an annexation.
Okay, so we just need a motion to remove it from the agenda. Okay? Could I have that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by trustee Semple. Discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Very good. And the final item on my report is a proposed village TIF district. First, I need a motion to authorize our village administrator to sign a professional services agreement dated December 21st, 2015, with Kane McKenna and Associates. So moved. Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Very good. That completes the motions on my report. Just want to thank everyone live here for attending and those watching online, thank you as well, and just wish everyone a Happy New Year. And I hope that 2016 is a very happy year and prosperous for you. All right? Let's go to, instead of the trustee reports, at this time, we have a liquor control commission meeting. And let's attend to that if we could, please. So I need a motion at this time to.
Recession.
Recession into the liquor control commission meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Kim. Norton.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Yes. Okay, I need a motion to convene the liquor control commission meeting. So moved. Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
And now attendance.
Abernathy.
Kim.
Here.
Norton.
Here.
Ricas.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Okay, at this time in the liquor control commission meeting is the time for public commentary. Is anyone present live that wishes to address the liquor control commission and public commentary from the podium? If so, could you please raise your hand? Okay. Then we'll close that down and move on to the liquor license interest from Maya's. Want to come on up and if you could just give us your name and your address if you so desire? And then if you could just tell us what you're thinking.
Hello, my name, oh, sorry. Hello, my name is Guadalupe Diaz. I represent my parents and the whole company, Maya's Restaurant.
Good evening. My name's Elise Oriana, and I'm also here on behalf of Maya's Restaurant and the family, the Diaz family.
Okay. Can you describe your interest in getting a liquor license? Why? And just.
Well, as a lot of you are aware, it's been over a year that Mundaline was blessed by having Maya's come here to Mundaline and their delicious food. And over the months that they've been here, you know, everybody's supported Maya's and we want to continue in that success. And one of the things that is going to enable them in the next census is actually to have a liquor license in order to service their customers, which in fact, they've had a lot of demand, you know, for inquiries in order to serve that type of service. And that's why we're here and we submitted a letter of interest on behalf of Maya's.
Okay.
And with the liquor license, we would be expanding more our menu for more Mexican food and more different dinner dishes, too.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the liquor commissioners? Yes?
I have a question. It is encompassed in your license and allowed, but will you be having pina coladas and margaritas? There is kind of a shortage of that in the village, just saying.
Yes.
You will? Okay. The blended drinks? All right. And it says here, you will not be petitioning for video gaming. I just want to confirm.
Yeah, no video gaming license.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, trustee Semple.
Just clarification. An F license, not only is it no bar, so you're, when I'm sitting at the table ordering my meal, I can order a margarita or whatever, but there's no takeout allowed. So I can't go there and buy a six-pack of Pacifico beer to take home with me, correct? It's just for consumption onsite at a table, not a bar, assuming I'm 21 years old, of course. Correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
And you do, you are aware that, I'm assuming as friendly as we are with working to give you the liquor license, if you do serve a minor, it's not going to be very friendly to you. So I hope you take it seriously and don't serve minors because we do take it very seriously. And we remind everybody, every petitioner that comes up that eventually gets their liquor license, they get the same speech, sometimes from me or we take turns. But we do take it seriously. So, okay? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else?
But just to address a little bit about that, the intent of Maya's is, you know, for everybody to come in and sit down and just order like you said, a margarita and[1740.97]
for everybody to come in and sit down and just order, like you said, a margarita and have it at your table. There would be no takeout, you know, you couldn't take the liquor out. Another thing I wanted to emphasize is that Maya's Restaurant and the family has been a great supporter of what is Mundaline Stand Up, as well as myself. And, like you said, you know, in Mundaline Stand Up, we address what is, you know, the consumption of alcohol and minors. We want to, you know, educate that, that whole aspect of not having our youth drinking Maya's. And I think they attend the Stand Up meetings, so they're very, much very aware of that. That's not, at the end, something that they want to do.
I do have just one question. You're going for an F license, which allows full liquor. What, are you getting a lot of requests for those types of things as opposed to just beer and wine? Or is that because you want to be able to serve, as trustee Kim said, like margaritas and other things that are more conducive with the flavor of your restaurant?
Well, we are getting a lot of requests for margaritas and different stuff like that, not just beer and alcohol. We get phone calls like, "Do you sell margaritas?" And we have to tell people, "No, we don't." So then we do kind of lose business.
Okay. So, they have to have that F license? Is that correct in order to do that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Well, I'll echo trustee Semple's sentiments. I mean, just let me ask you this, just out of the employee count you have, how many would get Basset trained? I can ask that, right? That's a good question. I mean, of your employees, just the total count that would undergo Basset training to serve liquor?
Like, five persons, plus everybody.
It would be everybody over the age of 21, of course, to be able to serve alcohol. So, it's five.
At least five?
Five.
Okay. Okay. And, you know, echo trustee Semple, if you serve liquor to underage, and you need to be aware of the process that we check, you know, the police do run details to check on that. You should be very aware, you know, that we take that seriously. Okay? We understand that? And so, what I need you to do then, now, let's just take a poll here. The trustees, let's just go down the horn here. Is everyone okay with this? Thumbs up? Everything good?
Yes. I am good.
Okay. I am. Tomorrow, if you could, just, normally, there's a little piece of paper you need to get that gives you the instructions on where to go from here. Okay? But you have the approval here, and it's all, it's all good, and we wish you great success. Now, that said, I, after all this, I have to ask, with the changes in the menu, are you still going to serve your French toast at all hours of the day?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Very good.
That won't change. Don't worry.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I think that's it. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Liquor Control Commission meeting? That was a motion by Russell, second by Norton, to reconvene. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries. And now attendance? I think, are we on attendance?
Kim?
Here.
Norton?
Here.
Ricas?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Very good. We are reconvened. We've called roll, and we are on to the trustee reports. Item A, Public Works Committee, trustee Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We only have one item on our agenda tonight. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the village administrator to sign a contract with Perfect Cleaning Service Corporation for an additional three years, for the year 17 through 19, 2017 through 2019, at a cost of $64,500 per year.
Okay. Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, trustee Kim.
If I just may ask, Mr. Libado, has consideration been given for maybe like a full-time janitor type position versus contracting out the services?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Boucher answer that question, I'm sure.
Always. Absolutely. But with the price point you see here, relative to a single employee at the base level pay for Maintenance Act II, this is approximately with benefits, probably about $10,000 cheaper.
That's fine. Yeah, I kind of assume the same, but it's nice to, like, talk through it, and especially for the people at home in the audience. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many days a week do they come in and clean? Every day. Every day, during the week? Five days? Five days. Is there any benefit to make that lesser amount? I mean, it doesn't seem like we generate a lot of traffic to require that cleaning. I think you'd get into a difficult situation there, because it's not just the debris or accumulation because of pedestrian traffic, it's also the accumulation of dust and dirt from not being areas that are heavily traveled. We also have included in this contract is window washing and light cleaning, and the heavier cleaning that occurs on a monthly or quarterly basis. It's not just the daily dusting, vacuuming, mopping, sweeping, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, that's all we've got.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Finance Committee, trustee Semple.
Just have one motion on the agenda for Finance Committee this evening, Mr. Mayor, and that's to pay the bills. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of bills, as indicated in the governing body report, for the period between December 15, 2015, and ending January 11, 2016, in the amount of $1,593,766.94, as submitted in your board packets this evening.
Motion by Semple?
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion. Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Public Safety Committee, trustee Ricas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one motion, and after which I'll ask Chief Gunther to tell us about anything, other things that are happening. But I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution terminating the intergovernmental agreement that created the Lake County and McHenry County Fire Department's Specialized Response Team. And if there are any questions, I'd like to refer those questions to Chief Gunther. But I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Ricas?
Second.
Second by trustee Semple. Discussion. Okay. I would ask just for a summary, if we could, because, you know, we're terminating an intergovernmental agreement, and I know in the write-up it was quite obvious as to why, but we have a lot of people watching it in here, so just a quick summary, if you could.
I'll give you the summary. If there's details, I'm going to turn it over to my partner here. Essentially, 2005, there was agreement between McHenry County and Lake County to provide special response team services for special rescues, high-line rescues, trenches, et cetera, specialized rescue, and with that came equipment. And that was largely because McHenry County agencies were not capable of those types of rescues, nor did they have the equipment to assist them in doing that. So, there was an intergovernmental agreement between the two counties to provide that service to McHenry County in the event they needed those special services. Since then, in the last 10 years, they've come up to speed quite a bit more. They have the equipment now, they have the, most of the training available, and so the intergovernmental agreement is no longer needed. The equipment that was purchased during that stint, that 10-year stint, will be divided back up, 60% coming back to Lake County, Mabus, and 40 staying with McHenry County, if that makes sense. None of the equipment is Village of Mundaline-owned equipment. It's state property, always was and still is. And there is no adjustment to any services here to our town. This is just a agreement that most, if not all, Ben, Lake County Fire Departments have been asked to review and to make changes to.
Okay. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ricas?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. It's been a number of weeks since our last meeting, and that went through a holiday period, so I'd like to ask Chief Gunther if there's anything that he'd like to tell us about what transpired, or any events, or anything?
No. Nothing of major consequences took place over that time. I will say today, I know there were a lot of calls regarding traffic. We did have some significant incidents up in the northwest portion of town, including a very serious accident in Gray's Lakes jurisdiction on Route 83 between Peterson and Winchester. However, we were required to shut down traffic in that area, at which time we had a secondary incident that took place while that traffic was shut down. So, the Melothean Road corridor was affected for a majority of the day, and that was, I know, we received a lot of calls for that. Other than that, I have nothing to report, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Chief Deputy Chief Yoder?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. Then that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee, trustee Abernathy is out of town, and so, next up would be trustee Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always love a night when I get to speak multiple times. The following motions are in relation to the First Amendment to the Annexation Agreement between Mackin Land Company LLC, Graham C. Stores, and the Village of Mundaline. The first motion is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and findings of fact.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next motion is a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Ricas?
No.
Motion carries.
The next motion is a motion to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a First Amendment to the Annexation Agreement for property located at 700 South Route 83, formerly 26951 and 26923 North Highway 83, and 19779 and 19763 West Hawthorne Boulevard. Mackin Land Company LLC, 26951 North Highway 83, Graham C. Stores.
Second.
Motion by Russell. Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
No.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Final motion of this agreement, a motion to pass an ordinance approving the Mackin Land Company LLC, 26951 North Highway 83 petition, for a map amendment to change the zoning of property commonly known as 700 South Route 83, formerly known as 26951 and 26923 North Highway 83, and 19779 and 19763 West Hawthorne Boulevard, and the vacated portion of Hawthorne Boulevard, Graham C. Stores.
Second.
Motion by Russell. Second by Kim. Discussion. Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I only have one last thing.
All right.
In keeping with trustee Abernathy's past, we'd like to read off all of the new businesses tonight. The first business is VD Services. They're at 510 North Lake Street. They're going to prepare taxes. Cabinet Creations Plus at 515 North Lake Street. If you haven't been into Cabinet Creations Plus, go in. If you don't spend some money on your kitchen, I'd be surprised. Beautiful facility, very, very nicely done, very well put together. Another business, yes, Class Learning Center. It's 1432 South Butterfield Road. They're educational consultants. And Lake County Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, 370 Town Line Road. They're martial arts. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Communication and Marketing Committee, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No motions on the table tonight, but a few updates. I received a couple of residents' questions this week on tree recycling, and in our newsletter we said, I believe we said it was for about a week, but Groot said they would accept the trees up until the 31st on their normal trash pickup day. So, if you're watching, or if anyone wants to know, the trees will be picked up until the 31st on your normal trash pickup day. It can't have any decorations, and it can't be in the bag, it's just got to be the tree. For more information like that, you could check out the Facebook page, because it was posted on there. And if you don't like to be social, because you're antisocial, you could go email info@mundaline.org to join the e-newsletter, and it will be posted on there as well. I received, okay, let's see here, I'm supposed to read this off, but it's a little bit confusing to me. So, this is a business appreciation breakfast and networking event, and it's from 7:30 to 9:30 a.m. on January 28. The 7:30 to 8:30 part is run by the Mundaline Business Alliance, correct? And you have a speaker coming? Can you talk a little bit about the speaker?
Well, the speaker is for the whole business appreciation breakfast. There's a number of speakers. Some speakers have not been...
Bob Dole, Floyd Platt?
Yes. He's the paid speaker. Bob Dole will be there. The mayor will be speaking. Jeannie Silver will be hosting the event. The opening salvo will be to walk through and see 40 businesses located in town. We'll each have a table and showing off their wheres and what they do. And then the speakers, and the Doubletree always puts on a wonderful food, wonderful food and a nice facility.
Okay. So, all Mundaline business owners and managers are encouraged to attend. Let's see here, and I think, it says right here, like the village's Facebook page. I say that every single time, like the village's Facebook page, if you haven't already. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, trustee Norton.
I have no motions to make tonight.